Board Public Works Safety Special Meeting for Tuesday, June the 24th, 2025 is now in session. First on our agenda is amended resolution number seven, 2025.
Good evening. Beth Fields with Strategic Initiatives. Thank you for entertaining this at this evening's meeting. I appreciate it very much. This resolution approves the transfer of real property from the City of Richmond to the Economic Development Corporation of Wayne County. This is the property located at six zero one East Main Street. This is for the Sixth Main Apartment Complex Project. This, the agreement to enter into a transfer for this property as well as parking spaces in our parking garage for the developer, were agreed upon by the mayor and the redevelopment commission on March fourth of 2024. And we are now at the point where we are ready to close and to actually transfer these properties. So this document will allow us to transfer that, and it also identifies who on behalf of the City of Richmond may sign documents for this transaction, including Mr. Lotman as president of the Board of Public Works and Safety. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
As soon as you get this all signed, will they start construction?
They started today, actually.
Great, great, great. Hey, I'd move for approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve amended resolution number seven, 2025 as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now we will take a five-minute break and we will reconvene with grievance number twenty twenty-five dash zero one. Welcome back to the special meeting for Tuesday, June 24th, 2025 for the Board of Works. We are now reconvened. Now on the agenda is the hearing for grievance number one, 2025 of the local fourteen oh eight Richmond Professional Firefighters with regard to the denial of overtime of firefighter Michael Stolssis, Stolffus, Stolssis, sorry about that again. Interpretation or application of collective bargaining agreement. Everyone who attends to speak and present evidence, please stand and raise your right hand and the clerk or deputy clerk, sorry, the deputy clerk will swear you in.
We all have the ones that want to speak? Okay. Do each of you swear or affirm under the penalty of perjury that the testimony that you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
The union will go first, then the administration. If board members have any questions, we will ask them at the end of the union's presentation, and then again at the end of the administration's presentation. Then the union will be given the opportunity to make any follow-up remarks and final statements. And the administration will be given the opportunity to make any follow-up remarks and final statements. Following this, the board members may ask any additional questions of both the union and the administration to resolve any remaining questions the board would have. Will the union representative please introduce themselves and begin your case?
Good evening. My name is Jordan Price. I'm the second vice president and grievance chairman of local fourteen, fourteen oh eight for the Richmond Fire Department. I thank you guys for this time that you're taking out of your evening to go over grievance twenty twenty-five dash zero one regarding firefighter Michael Stolssis. Michael Stolssis is requesting compensation for hours in his live weeks and in clinical hours, which are mandatory part of his education as well as his employment with Richmond Fire Department in regards to having to become a paramedic within five years. Michael Stolssis is currently enrolled in this class that was grant-funded through the state of Indiana. So we were able to save costs on the expense of the class itself. But during this time that he's been in class, he has not been compensated at all for any overtime accrued during this time with live weeks and clinical hours. That is what this package that I've, packet that I put on, put together with Michael Stolssis details. It goes over from start to finish, all events, all claims and all proof. I sent an email to Kim and hopefully I was able to get distributed out to you guys, give you guys ample time to go over this. As of this time, do you guys have any questions of me? Would you like for me to go through this entire packet? I'm brand new to the grievance chairman position, so I'm unfamiliar with this territory, so I apologize. But I'll go about it as best I can.
I'm brand new too, so welcome to the class of most brand new.
My position B is your case to present, so you see as best.
Okay, all right. So starting from the top, we have our index here. Were you guys provided with these packages? Okay. You'll see that the index breaks down each article, and I'll start with article one. Article one is the grievance that was presented. Michael Stolssis came, approached me at the end of March concerning this grievance. I believe we were able to get it going in April. This just shows what Michael initially claimed for his grievance and proof of the first and second steps here. I'll go ahead and read real quick. The facts pertaining to this agreement are as follows. Firefighter is currently in the school VMS paramedicine class and has been denied payment for time spent in live weeks and clinical hours, which are a requirement to obtain the paramedic, requirement to obtain paramedicine certificate. The suggested correction is to pay firefighter for all hours spent in required live weeks and clinicals during paramedicine class and obtain the paramedicine certificate is required to maintain a position on RFD. Article one is a statement from Michael Stolssis. This is article one, page two, stating, "I, Michael Stolssis, currently holding the rank of firefighter slash EMT on engine two of the Richmond, Indiana Fire Department and currently enrolled in the school VMS's paramedicine program to fulfill my contractual obligations outlined in contract number eighty dash twenty twenty-four of obtaining my paramedic certification. I have been informed by the fire department administration that they will not uphold the contract and refuse to pay for my time spent on clinicals as well as time spent in live weeks. This seems like a contradiction of contract number eighty twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-four. As it clearly states, the city will pay for all necessary costs associated with the education required to achieve this certification. Also noted in the recitals in paragraph B, it states, "Upon hiring new firefighters, the city pays for members to obtain their paramedicine certification, which, as is more particularly addressed below, is a requirement to remain as a firefighter with the City of Richmond." The school requires all students to spend a specific amount of time in clinicals to hone their skills as well as physical time spent in what they refer to as, as live weeks for skills testing. This time spent in live weeks and clinicals is a requirement to obtain the certificate and as such would be included in the above-mentioned contract. Looking through the agreement between the City of Richmond, Indiana and Richmond Professional Firefighters, Inc., International Associate Firefighters AFL-CIO Local Fourteen Oh Eight, Contract Number Two Thirteen Dash Twenty Twenty Four, otherwise known as the CBA. Under Article Nineteen, call back slash overtime, and paragraph two, it states, "For the purpose of being paid overtime, hours or days spent on work-related education or scheduled vacation will apply to the Necessary Fair Labor Standards Act hours requirement. Stated otherwise, if a firefighter's monthly duty mandatory minimum time is met either through work, vacation, or schooling, and the firefighter is called back for an additional day overtime pay will apply to that day. As I am currently still on the front line working my full-time shift, I believe any time spent in clinicals or live weeks would be considered overtime. I have included a copy of the CBA and the pre-employment agreement in this grievance packet to assist with your research." H three, Contract Number Two Thirteen Dash Twenty Twenty Four. The agreement between the City of Richmond, Indiana, Richmond, Indiana and the Richmond Professional Firefighters, Inc., International Association of Firefighters AFL-CIO Local Fourteen Oh Eight, valid from January one, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Article Twenty-nine, Promotions Education Requirements Business Demotions Under Paramedic States. All firefighters hired after June first, twenty fourteen will be required to hold EMTP certification before their fifth-year anniversary of hire date. The administration must continue to maintain the paramedic requirements that have been set forth in the pre-employment agreement for each new hire. Article Nineteen, Payback Slash Overtime. In paragraph two, it states, "For the purpose of being paid overtime," oh, we just went over that one. We'll go down further to the fifth paragraph. "The agreement made and entered as contract number eighty twenty twenty-four on the twenty-fifth day of April, twenty twenty-four by, in between the City of Richmond, Indiana, a municipal corporation acting by and through its Board of Public Works and Safety, and Michael Stolssis states clearly in recitals B, 'Upon hiring new firefighters, the city pays for the members to obtain their paramedic, their paramedicine certification. In the body of the contract under agreement, paramedicine requirement, employee acknowledges and agrees that he slash ye will obtain a paramedic certificate, certi- certification, certification within five years of the date of hire. The city will pay for all necessary costs associated with the education required to achieve a certification." Article two shows this agreement between the city and firefighter Stolssis. This is his pre-employment agreement, I believe. Yes, and this is, uh, this pre-employment agreement is actually one that came under this administration. There was one already prior, which is what birthed this pre-employment agreement, which I believe you guys are aware of as you guys have signed off on these. This agreement was to get the chief's office, and Chief Kinder's own words, was to get the chief's office hands out of the legality of these agreements and put it in the city's hands. So as we understand it, that this is a contract between the city and Michael Stolssis, and the, the denial of compensation through Chief Kinder is not valid based on our claims. Article two, one, page one, page two, and page three all show that agreement. And we'll go through this agreement real quick. This agreement is made and entered into as contract number eighty dash twenty twenty-four. As of the twenty-fifth day of April, twenty twenty-four, by and between, by, by and between the City of Richmond, Indiana Municipal Corporation acting by and through its Board of Public Works and Safety, referred to as the city, and Michael Stolssis, here and after referred to as the employee. The city and the employee are sometimes referred to as a party or collectively as the parties, recitals. A. The City of Richmond, Indiana is a political subdivision which operates a fire department for the safety of its residents. B. Upon hiring new firefighters, the city pays for the members to obtain their paramedicine certification, which, as is more particularly addressed below, is a requirement to remain as a firefighter with the City of Richmond. C. Employee understands the above-referenced paramedicine requirement and agrees to comply with the terms governing the same as set forth below. For valuable consideration, the receipt of which is hereby acknowledged, the parties agree as, as follows. The agreement. One, recitals. The foregoing recitals are hereby incorporated herein as part hereof by this reference here, thereto. Paramedicine requirement. Employee acknowledges and agrees that he slash ye will obtain a paramedicine certification within five years of the date of fire. The city will pay for all necessary costs associated with the education required to achieve this certification. I'd like to highlight that sentence there as a part of our claim for compensation. These are necessary costs associated. All other paramedic programs that all of our other paramedics go through are all compensated in the same exact fashion that he's asking for. He would be the first, as well as another individual that's in his class, to not be compensated for his time spent in live weeks and clinicals. In the event that the employee fails to obtain a paramedicine certification within the timeframe set forth here, herein, employee agrees that the city may terminate employment and employee waives any and all hearing rights or other available due process under applicable Indiana law. The city may provide for an extension of time with which to obtain the paramedicine certification if the employee is able to show extenuating circumstances beyond the employee's control, which dictated that the employee could not achieve the paramedicine certification within five years. Additionally, in the event that employee shall be delayed or hindered or prevented from the performance of any obligation required under this agreement by reason of strikes, lockouts, failure of power, fire, or other casualty, acts of God, restrictive governmental laws or regulations. Page two. Riots, insurrection, war, or any other reason preventing performance that is not within the reasonable control of the employee as the case may be, then the performance of such obligations shall be excused for the period of such delay and period for the performance of any such act shall be extended for a period equivalent to the period of such delay. So the second part of here goes over the reimbursement of expenses. If the employee was to leave, I, well, I'm gonna go ahead and skip over this part, but if you guys would like to visit this part, please speak up and we can come back to it. We'll go to the general terms of settlement on page three of article two. A. This agreement constitutes the entire and final agreement between the parties concerning the subjects of this agreement. There are no other agreements, understandings, warranties, or representations among the parties concerning the subject of this agreement. If any provision of this argument, of this agreement is held to be invalid, the remaining provisions shall remain in full force and effect. A. On this page is another paragraph that we'd like to bring attention to. There are no other agreements, understandings, or warranties, or warranties or representations among the parties concerning the subject of this agreement. This agreement does state that all costs will be covered for paramedic, for firefighter Stolssis's paramedicine program, getting his certificate between the city and Michael Stolssis. So we view the city as the only body able to deny, for valid reason, him being compensated for his time. B. This agreement may be executed by facsimile, signature, and in counterparts, each of which will be deemed an original document, but all which will constitute a single document provided. However, that this agreement shall not be binding or constitute evidence of a contract between the parties until such time. As a counterpart of this agreement has been executed by each party and a copy thereof delivered via facsimile or email transmission to the parties. Neither this, C. Neither this agreement nor any of the provisions hereof can be changed, waived, discharged, or terminated except for an instrument in writing signed by the parties. That concludes article two. Article three, if you see the red boxes on each page, page one, page two, page three, page four, and five, these are all citations in our current CBA with the city where we've all, we've made our claims. If you'd like for me to go over one by one, I will. If you would like to visit any of them, after I've gone through the packet, we can come back to it. Article four. This is my letter to the chief's office on behalf of Michael Stolssis. I'll go ahead and read this. "On behalf of the executive board of the Richmond Professional Firefighters Local Fourteen Oh Eight and the grievance committee, I am requesting a meeting with Chief Kinder or his designated to discuss the details of a grievance filed by firefighter Michael Stolssis per Article Ten of the agreement between the City of Richmond and the Richmond Professional Firefighters Local Fourteen Oh Eight. The complaint of the employee shall be presented to the fire chief or his or her designated in written form within ten regular office days after the initial meeting. Michael Stolssis grievance was accepted by the union and approved by the executive board on four twenty-four twenty-five. Step one outlined in Article Ten has been completed without satisfaction on four twenty-nine twenty twenty-five. This meeting took place with battalion chief Eric Holmes, Lieutenant Josh Ward, and firefighter Michael Stolssis being present. This letter shall serve as the official written submission to step two. Attached with this letter is a copy of the grievance that outlines the specific violations as well as supporting documents to corroborate his claims. Please contact Michael Stolssis or, or me to schedule a meeting to step, for step two within ten regular office days in order to work towards a mutual resolution." So we proceeded to have this meeting with Chief Kinder, and Chief Kinder ultimately denied this grievance along with Chief Clark. I'll read their response letter real quick. This is article five, page one. Dear Mr. Stolssis, please be advised that this letter is intended as step two of written response pursuant to Article Ten of the CBA grievance procedure. The grievance which you submitted on April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five provides facts pertaining that you are currently enrolled in a paramedic program sanctioned by the school VMS. Your complaint that you are not being paid overtime for time spent in live weeks and clinical hours, you reference Article Nineteen, Paragraph Two as an overtime violation of the CBA. Also, you reference your pre-employment contract eighty dash twenty twenty-four. Subsequent to the, subsequent to the step-two meeting referenced above and considering this matter with the details as set forth, the undersigned denies the grievance. The reasoning. Grievance time barred. Step one of the grievance procedure provides that all grievances must be filed in writing within ten administrative workdays of the event forming the basis of grievance. As noted above, the grievance is filed on April seventeenth, twenty twenty-five by your own class schedule you stated that the permanent class begun on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Pursuant to Article Ten of the CBA, all grievances must be filed in writing within ten working days of the event forming the basis of the grievance. Your grievance was submitted eight months after the event of occurrence forming the basis of the grievance, which is outside of the required timeframe. Grievance twenty twenty-five dash one is denied of the grounds of the step number one timeframe is not met per Article Ten of the CBA. Other denial responses. Article four of CBA, "As the fire chief, it is my responsibility of planning and budgeting for the direct working force of the Richmond Fire Department. The Richmond Fire Department did not place you into this paramedic school. The school VMS offered a class outside the control of Richmond Fire Department. You did not submit a training request form for outside training. You enrolled into the school VMS on your own accord. The fire chief has to have the ability to budget and plan for the mandatory training that all Richmond Fire Department employee requirements must be met." Must meet. Grievance twenty twenty-five dash one is denied on Article Four, CBA, number two thirteen dash twenty twenty-four, management rights. Article Nineteen, Paragraph Two, "Call back slash overtime, purpose of being paid overtime. You enrolled into the school VMS paramedicine program in your own accord. By volunteering to attend the school VMS paramedicine program without fire department approval, you do not qualify for any overtime under Article Nineteen of the CBA. Richmond Fire Department did not approve or require you to enroll in the school VMS paramedicine program. The Richmond Fire Department did not provide any financials to the school VMS. The chief's office did not meet with union represent, did meet with union representative from Local Fourteen Oh Eight about the position the administration took in September twenty twenty-four of the school VMS paramedicine, paramedic program. It was explained in detail that the Richmond Fire Department would not support the school VMS program at that time because of budget and planning issues." So in this article, article five, the chief's office response, you can see that number one, grievance time barred was the first reason of denial for this grievance. And number two, both, quote, budgetary constraints and budgetary issues. Here, in article six, is the grievance committee, you, Local Fourteen Oh Eight, and Michael Stolssis rebuttal to the denial, the denial of the grievance from Chief Jeff Kinder. Dear Chief Kinder, this letter serves as a Local Fourteen Oh Eight Union's formal rebuttal to the step-two denial of grievance twenty twenty-five dash one dated May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. The union appreciates the response, but must respectfully disagree with the conclusions presented and provide the following counterpoints for further, for further review. This letter serves to notify that the chief's office of the union's intent to proceed to step-three of the grievance procedure with the Board of Public Works and Safety of the city. Number one, response to the grievance time barred argument. The assertion that this grievance is untimely fails to consider the actual triggering event of the grievance. While the paramedic, while the paramedic program began on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, Michael Stolssis was not informed either verbally or in writing at the time of enrollment that he would not be compensated for clinical hours or live weeks. The first instance in which he became aware that overtime would not be honored for these hours occurred after his acceptance in the class and acceptance of the state grant which funded this course. Each unpaid mandatory hour is a separate ongoing violation, thus extending the grievance window under the doctrine of continuing violations. Moreover, he made multiple good faith attempts to clarify his compensation status directly with the current EMS chief on the page two, who assured that he would look into it. This gave him, Michael Stolssis, a reasonable expectation that the matter was being addressed internally. To penalize an employee for not filing sooner while internal communication appeared ongoing and the grievance itself pertains to a recurring failure to pay for mandatory time is inconsistent with both fair labor practice and the intent of the contractual grievance process. Response two, response to article four, CBA, management responsibilities. It is inaccurate to claim that there were no funds or administrative intent to support this, his participation in paramedic training as was clearly documented in the grievance packet provided. First bulletin point, funds were available and were ultimately used to send other employees to a more expensive paramedic, paramedic program selected by the chief's office. The former EMS chief informed multiple members, including Michael Stolssis, that five employees were removed from a different paramedic program just days prior to starting the program due to budgetary timing. Yet, the eventual program selected cost more per person. The school VMS program that Michael Stolssis attended was grant-funded and cost substantially less than the one selected by the department, saving the city thousands of dollars. Of the seven seats located by the department, only six were used. The cost savings from the unused seat would have been more than sufficient to support two to three The cost savings from the unused seat would have been more than sufficient to support two to three participants in the school VMS program, further demonstrating that financial support for his participation was not out of reach, but rather denied arbitrarily. Michael Stolzfis enrolled in a recognized cost effective training program, which the department has used multiple times previously after seemingly having approval from the chief of EMS, thereby fulfilling the department's stated staffing and certification goals in a fiscally responsible manner. Number three, the pre-employment agreement and the city's obligation. Further complicating this matter is the conduct surrounding the pre-employment agreement, number eighty dash twenty twenty four between Michael Stolzfis and the city of Richmond. Chief Kinder is now attempting to void this contract despite compelling him to sign it four months after he had already been sworn in as a member of the Richmond Fire Department. When Michael Stolzfis was called to the chief's office to sign the agreement, he raised concerns about the language describing it as a pre-employment uh document, given that he was already employed. He asked what the consequence would be if he chose not to sign. He was told on he was told unequivocally that he would be fired. His lieutenant at the time was a witness to this interaction, and he's here today. Chief Kinder explicitly stated at that time that this was a contract between Michael Stolzfis and the city of Richmond and emphasized that he would have no involvement in it, saying, "My hands stay out of it," quotes. However, his current refusal to honor the agreement, specifically the portion stating that the city will pay for all necessary costs associated with the education required to achieve this certification is a direct contradiction of that claim. His actions now place him squarely in the middle of a contract he previously declared was not under his authority. This conduct raises serious concerns about the validity and enforcement of agreements made in good faith with the city and its agents. Number four, response to Article nineteen, paragraph two, overtime denial. It is acknowledged that paramedic program enrollments must be completed by the employee. However, the department's assertion that Michael Stolzfis's participation was entirely voluntary disregards critical facts. Michael Stolzfis was made aware of the school VMS program through the EMS chief at the time, an official acting under the authority of the fire chief. This method of communication and dissemination is the same process used to notify other members of the department sanctioning EMS training. All of our training goes is usually uh disseminated, uh information disseminated through the uh chief of EMS to us either through our ESO program or uh calls, conference calls in the morning. Uh, all of our trainings are are usually through him, communication through him, emails, all that. On the second one. Training request forms are not. Sorry, training request forms are not utilized for paramedic schools within the department. The chief's office uh quoted a training request form in his response. This training request form has not been used at all in the past for paramedic programs. It is not what it's for. If you could, if you see the form itself, you'll easily be able to tell. I had a quick conversation with our um training chief, and he also confirmed this, that this is not to be used for paramedic programs. This uh has been historically used for voluntary fire base programs. So uh this has been confirmed with the department training chief, training chief Moore said that the program that the training request form that the department has has not been utilized from paramedic programs and not meant to be used from paramedic programs. Historically, paramedic enrollment has followed by has followed a seniority and interest based system with no formal requests required and no such expectation communicated to any members of the Richmond Fire Department. According to the department training chief, the training request forms have historically been used for voluntary fire base training programs. Three, Michael Stolzfis pre-employment agreement explicitly requires that he become a paramedic within five years of becoming a sworn member of the Richmond Fire Department. As such, this training is mandatory. It's not elective and therefore falls under compen uh compensable time, including under Fair Labor Standards Act, FLSA, standards for mandatory off-site training. There is also precedent within the precedent within the department for back pay for the members who were initially denied compensation for similar mandatory training. Lastly, the chief's office refers to a meeting with the union representative regarding the school VMS. However, this meeting was neither disclosed nor officially approved by the union's executive board prior to its occurrence, and it occurred after Michael Stolzfis had already accepted the state funds, paid for application summends, and been accepted into the program. No official union position was presented or documented prior to this commitment, prior to his commitment to the class. The member referenced as the union representative stated himself that the meeting was unofficial, and when he brought it to the attention of members uh that it would affect, he was simply relaying information that he was told from the chief's office. Conclusion, Michael Stolzfis's participation in the school VMS paramedic program was prompted by departmental need supported through informal administrative channels and aligned with contractual obligations and employment requirements. The the denial of overtime for mandatory clinical and live training hours is inconsistent with past practice and the intent of Article nineteen and basic labor fairness principles. The union is committed to resolving this issue constructively and remains available for further dialogue. That was Article Six and um to clarify a few things on here. The voluntary part of it, uh again, here. I apologize. It's all right. We'll go down through here. So the um grievance time barred, we've addressed that each individual hour that he's not paid every time that he receives a check that doesn't have his overtime on it, Michael Stolzfis is aggrieved. The training request forms that the chief's quoted, again, not utilized for this situation and never has been utilized for this situation. Uh, Michael Stolzfis's pre-employment agreement was actually an agreement that he uh was made to sign after post uh employment, actually, um and does state that the city will provide um the funding for this uh paramedic program. This is a requirement. It's not voluntary. As you guys know, it's in our CBA. We have the um uh separate from the CBA, we have the individual um contract uh agreements, um the pre-employment agreements. None of the classes that our paramedics go to are um voluntary voluntary in the sense of, oh, you don't have to go because you just don't want to. We we have to go. The what is voluntary about it is what class you take and when. Everybody knows we have to become a paramedic within five years. The city knows that we have to become a paramedic within five years. The chief's office knows that. And if you're hiring multiple individuals that have to get their paramedic within this timeframe, there's going to be some issues that arise with uh budgeting. But when the chief's office sits there in multiple meetings and states, uh and we have witnesses for this, that they're going to send a select number of individuals for a paramedic class this year and so and end up sending less than what they originally said they were going to send, and then sent those guys to a three, two to three time more expensive class than what two other individuals chose to go to and say that this is voluntary and this is uh mandatory. It just doesn't make much sense to us. Uh, if we continue on, we get to Article Seven, that's just correspondence between uh Ms. Vessels and I. Here we have a series of events in Article Eight. So page one. April fourth, twenty twenty four. Everybody who was within the first five years on the department that had not received a paramedic license or was currently in class was called down to the training grounds and handed a packet containing information on the Reed paramedic program. Uh, this Reed paramedic program is the current program that uh multiple of our members are currently enrolled in. The administration said they would send seven people initially, but they would send more if the class didn't fill up. The number uh we were told is up to eleven. The paramedic program was the first of its kind from Reed. They have never graduated a paramedic through their program, and I, Michael Stolzfis, declined the offer. The program would require two nights per week in class and over a thousand hours between clinicals and class time, and I did not want to spend that much time away from my wife and kids. Again, this is Michael Stolzfis prerogative to choose when and what paramedic program that he goes to as long as he reaches his uh obligation of becoming a paramedic. April twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, I was called up to the chief up to Chief Kinder's office and presented with a pre-employment agreement and was told I had to sign it. At this time, I had already been a sworn member of the Richmond Fire Department for over four months. I asked, what happens if I don't sign it? The response was, you will be fired. During the time of probationary period, each firefighter has one year of probation, and they are still an at-will hire. They can be let go at any time for any reason. August twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, I was informed by Albert Dennis the fourth Deputy Chief of EMS about an un upcoming class in Winchester, Indiana. He mentioned this was an option for RFD firefighters who wanted to get their paramedic certification but weren't in the Reed program. This specific class was used multiple times already um in the last uh four years uh school VMS has been used, and I myself am a graduate of school VMS uh was actually right before um the last class that went to the school VMS. So he mentioned this was an option for RFD firefighters who wanted to get their paramedic certification but weren't in the Reed program. This class is considered a hybrid course, meaning most of the work is done online. It would require three weeks in class and significantly significantly fewer clinical hours, so it would allow me to stay at home and my and be with my family more. I was further informed by EMS chief Dennis that the state of Indiana was offering grants to pay for this paramedic course. August twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, I had a conversation with Acting Union President Morris about this course, and he said he would investigate it. He advised me to sign up as soon as possible before the class fills up and sent me a link to sign up for the class. September second, twenty twenty four, I submitted my application to the school VMS and applied for the grant from the state. Total cost, one hundred and fifty dollars. September fourth, twenty twenty four, I held my admissions brief with the school VMS acceptance panel. September fourth, twenty twenty four, I received my acceptance letter from the school VMS, and they informed me that the state had approved my request for the grant to pay for the course. September eighteenth, twenty twenty four, uh I received the curriculum for the school VMS. September eighteenth, twenty twenty four, Acting Union President informed me that the fire department declined to pay for the class time and clinical time. Even though the contract I had signed did not involve the fire chief, the contract was between the city of Richmond and me. Shortly after this, I ran into Chief Kinder. I asked him about it, and he informed me that they did not have the budget to pay for more people to go to class at this time. I told him that I had already been accepted into the class and that the course was being paid for by a state grant, so they would only be paying overtime for class hours and clinicals. He said it didn't matter, and there was no chance I would be getting paid, even though most of our paramedics on the department went through the same school and always got paid for their times. Uh, their time, which included clinical hours and live weeks, which he's requesting. He still declined. I asked him if the budget next year would cover this class at the first of the year. He said, that's too complicated. It's easier not to pay. I tried several times to talk to him again throughout the following months to no avail. I contacted the EMS chief several times throughout my time in paramedic school, trying to find a way that we can come to an agreement. He said that he was trying his best to convince the chief to pay for my time, but every time he said he got shut down. December second, twenty twenty four, first day, I was required to be in class for our live week. December second through uh through the fifth, after this date, we started clinicals. December twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, I received an overtime check that did not include my overtime accrued in class clinicals. Um, I followed the chain of command and contacted the deputy chief of EMS. He told me he would ask about it again. January twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, I received an overtime check that did not include my overtime accrued in class slash clinicals. I followed the chain of command and contacted the deputy chief of EMS. He told me he would ask about it again. February twenty first, twenty twenty five, another overtime check received, did not have the pay uh overtime on it. Again, contacted deputy chief of EMS, was told the same thing. March nineteenth, twenty twenty five, a shift meeting at the training ground with his chief. The entire B shift was there and the subject uh uh was brought up. Everybody on the shift thinks I should be getting paid for my time. Chief Kinder said they don't have the money to pay me, but mentioned that the EMS fund has over three million in it to be used in EMS related stuff. A lieutenant on shift mentioned mentioned that the paramedic class is EMS related. Chief Kinder shut down the meeting. March twenty first, twenty twenty five, I received an overtime check that did not include my time accrued for class slash clinicals. Page four. March twenty fourth, twenty twenty fif twenty five, I contacted the union grievance chairman and questioned him about filing agreements. We agreed to have a meeting. March twenty six, twenty twenty five, the union grievance chairman and I had a meeting and discussed options for filing agreements. We both agreed that I was being aggrieved on an ongoing basis. Every time I received an overtime paycheck that did not include my overtime hours accrued through paramedic school, it was another occurrence, forming a basis for grievance. April seventeen, twenty twenty four, I received an overtime check that did not include my time accrued in class slash clinicals. April twenty fourth, twenty twenty, uh I think that was meant to be twenty twenty five. April twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, I filed a grievance against the city of Richmond, Indiana for failure to pay overtime for the paramedic class per the pre-employment agreement. Article Nine, uh these are approximate numbers, um course cost differences between Reed, the Reed program that was created uh that our current uh class is going through. Their total classroom hours are five hundred and forty eight hours. Their clinical hours are six hundred and eighty eight. AP online course hours are forty eight hours. The cost of the paramedic course itself is eight thousand. AMP course cost, the they had to actually sign up for an A AMP course that was outside of Reed um through one of the local community colleges, and that was uh an extra twelve hundred per person. Total hours, twelve hundred and eighty four. The total course cost, ninety two thousand. Uh, overtime cost based on thirty dollars per hour, uh total overtime cost included in that total is thirty eight thousand five hundred and twenty. And this is easily gathered just from the numbers of listed required mandated hours that these guys have to have for guys and girls. And what the overtime calculated at that rate would include. The school VMS, on the other hand, is a hundred and twenty hours uh in the classroom for their live weeks. And clinical hours are four hundred and eight. The course cost was free this time due to the uh state uh grant that funded the course. Uh, AMP is included in school VMS, so you don't have to um pay for another college course uh to be in this class. The total course cost uh for itself uh is free. The overtime cost based on thirty dollars per hour, total overtime cost uh would be fifteen thousand eight hundred and forty. So of the five members in the current um Reed program, at least thirty eight thousand five hundred and twenty would be the number on them uh and for each person. And for school VMS, it would be around fifteen thousand eight hundred and forty. So as you can see, you can probably pay for a couple school VMS guys with the with one um budgeted individual for the Reed program. And like I said, there were seven guys budgeted for the Reed program. Six went, and they, when they first brought it to the attention of the uh department, there were potentially eleven places spots available. Article Ten is just some uh FLSA um stuff that was printed out regarding uh law enforcement and firefighters, and these required hours. More uh that we also believe helps support claims of overtime payment being required. Um, Article Eleven is a signed document from the former chief of EMS. Um, I'll read that real quick. On September twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, Albert Dennis the fourth was deputy chief of EMS. He advises that there was a paramedic program funded by the state of Indiana through school VMS. He notified Jeremy Hodapp through a phone conversation and Michael Stolzfis during a private conversation. He told us that the school VMS was a program that RFD had been using for years, and it was a good program to go through to obtain a paramedic license. Individuals sign below agree and attest this statement is true and accurate. This is signed by uh Albert Dennis the fourth, Jeremy Hodapp, and Michael Stolzfis. Article Twelve um is a screenshot of um uh says up top, says Chris Morris. This is him sending Michael Stolzfis the link to sign up for the grant. Article Twelve, page two, is um Michael Stolzfis, a hundred and fifty dollars paid to submit. Article twelve, page two is um Michael Stolzvis, one hundred and fifty dollars paid to submit uh the admissions deposit. And that's dated September third. This is his uh. Confirmation of uh. Receipt, I believe, from when he applied. That's dated September second. Um, and this is him being approved on page four uh for the class. That is uh our entire packet. If you have any questions for me, I am more than willing to answer them. I know that was a lot of information. I apologize.
On um article nineteen on page three on exhibit one. You refer to that and also you refer back to the um. Also exhibit ten, which is the uh training time, overtime eligibility for employees. On exhibit ten, page two, it talks about um. The rate of pay will be calculated on a number of hours worked in the counter week. Hours worked in excess of forty in a counter week are compensated to premium rate. Um, then it says uh exception to the forty hours standard and weekly work period applied to law enforcement firefighters. Can you kind of explain the asterisk a little bit to me when they talk about the exception? To the forty hour standard and weekly work period applied to law enforcement firefighters?
That's because we mainly, we don't usually work a forty hour work week. We're based off fifty-six, so that would be the exception for that.
Okay, alright. Bear with me a second.
Oh, you're fine.
I gotta like the yellow mark some for the chief later on. There also is a section in here. I'm trying to find it if you go to um. If you go to an accredited school, um, they do not pay um for the time for studying or something.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember exactly what it had to say in that particular case in there. Basically, in your case, um. You're asking for pay for his clinical as well as for the school time. Uh, for time and a half. Now, he did receive several overtime checks. Now, what were those checks for?
If if Michael Stolzvis received any overtime checks, it would be due to him working overtime for the department on the line. Whether that be as a EMT firefighter or engineer. Um, so his overtime checks were were paid every two weeks. So our first paycheck is just a normal check, oh, based on our salary and uh other money that's built in. And then the second check has all of our overtime in that cycle uh built into it, so we get it all at once.
The two-week period?
Yes.
Um. I know you're fifty-six hours on platoon system, just for my information, since I'm new to this. Do you work uh three days in a row to get to fifty-six or you work a day and you're off?
It's based on a twenty-eight day cycle, so whatever we fit within that cycle, some days, the month varies. Some months may be nine, some months, uh nine days, some months may be ten, others eleven. So uh based on a twenty-eight day cycle and fifty-six hour work week, that's how it would be uh factored.
And so do you get overtime when you hit forty-one hours? So do you get one hour of overtime or do you have to work fifty-six hours to get the overtime? How does that work?
I would, to give you the exact specifics, I would have to go back and get that information. Uh, but I want to say that it's based off of that fifty-six hour work week.
Based on some of what I've read here.
We have the first vice president.
Okay, but once you pass, you get the forty hours in, then you should be compensated for time and a half.
So uh from what it's been explained to me, uh. Oh, I'm sorry. Jeremy Blake, Lieutenant Engine Five, First Vice for Local fourteen oh eight. Uh, the battalion chiefs handle most of the payroll, but from just being at Station One for about fourteen years. Uh, it's my understanding that it's two hundred and twelve hours in a twenty-eight day uh cycle. So after the two hundred and twelve hours are met, then you get the time and a half. Even complicate the fifty-six hour work week. Then we get like like uh uh Mr. Jordan Price described. You get uh a regular paycheck based on your salary and longevity. And then two weeks later, you get the overtime check if there's uh additional monies for over the two hundred and twelve hours.
That that overtime is claimed, correct?
Yes.
So to also clarify on another thing you touched on where it talks about study time. To clarify, we are not asking for any study time. Uh, it's only in-person class and it's live week. It's live week. The live part is him being in person, since it's a hybrid course, some of it's online, some of it's in person. His live weeks, he's man- uh mandated to be there in person. Um, he also has to drive to uh Winchester for that as well. And then the clinical hours are also in-person working on an apparatus.
Would you consider the um the two courses, the REED Hospital course versus uh the course in Winchester? Um, there is a thousand hours in Winch- or in REED Hospital, uh considerably less than that.
Yes.
Uh, would you consider the additional training that the REED program would be beneficial to your department?
Um, so this is a uh new program. This has never been done by REED before. They have no proof of how well their um success rate is or anything like that, even with the extra hours. School VMS uh has been around for a couple decades now. They have like a ninety-nine percent passing rate. Um, I believe we currently have about four or five different classes that have went through uh school VMS. That make up most of our current paramedics. Um, and we haven't had any issues with any of our our medics at this time. So to say uh the more hours in the REED program necessarily will be an ultimate benefit. I can't really say that, just because they're longer doesn't necessarily mean that they would benefit better.
On the EMS school. In in reading through here, some of them you talked about getting a passing grade. Do you get an actual grade in the school?
Yes, so.
Just get a passing grade.
It's it's just like any other uh course that you take. You have schoolwork that's graded. Um, they're in-class work. You have your tests that are all graded. Um, uh, you have discussions that you have, you're graded on based on your participation, et cetera. Um, so it's just like normal school K through twelve that you've experienced into college, uh any collegiate classes you've taken. It's the same thing, no different.
I assume a passing grade would be a C.
A C, absolutely. And uh Michael Stolzvis has also uh provided all his transcripts uh up to date. And he's in passing. He's passing his class.
If they do not pass, is the city obligated to send you back again?
Um, this, I believe it has in our contract uh that outlined for extenuating circumstances. Um, so that would be uh based on an individual basis from what I understand. But there is an allotted uh two-year grace period um in situations pertaining to that. So uh a total of seven years would be allowed, but during that time, uh. The employee would be required to pay for class time. Unless it was the the fault of the department on why he wasn't or she wasn't able to get.
I read all that.
Yeah.
Tell me about the clinical hours. I'm interested in that, because.
Okay.
Uh, there's such a difference between the REED program and uh like I'll say Winchester.
Yeah, so.
It is and there. And I looked just at clinical hours, a six hundred and eighty-eight clinical hours versus four hundred and eight, definite cost savings on there.
Yes.
And so are you in an ambulance out of Winchester or where where do you do that?
So, school VMS provides um multiple resources. Um, at multiple different um facilities and departments to where you can ride along with it to get your clinical time done. Uh, Richmond Fire Department is one. Our guys are allowed to ride third man uh on their days off. Um, to ride their clinicals and um gain experience. They're able to do it in Winchester and in any other facilities that the school VMS has contacted and uh approved. Um, same thing with REED. Any program, any facilities that REED has pre-approved. Um, same thing applies there. They're able to go and ride with them and hone their skills. And it also includes in-hospital time as well. There's a certain amount of in-hospital hours that you have to take, that you have to have. Uh, but that also is in the total uh clinical hour time, I believe.
You have basic four classifications of EMS people. Would you have a higher classification coming out of the REED program versus the Winchester program?
Uh, I am not a hundred percent sure what all the REED program uh gives you once you graduate.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
I think Ken kind of touched on a couple of mine as far as the discrepancy between the classroom hours for the REED program versus the school VMS program. Um, I was just curious about, in the CBA, this is exhibit three, page two. There's a reference to a uh a training committee which shall be established consisting of representation of both the city and bargaining unit. To establish training to assist members of the Richmond Fire Department to meet requirements for certification. Um, could you just talk a little bit about what is the status of that training committee? Um, do they, do they establish which programs are or are not sanctioned?
So currently, we do not have a fully functional training committee. Um, most of our trainings are uh through our training chief as of right now. And any trainings that he may have scheduled or uh wants us to uh be doing at this time. He uh will either send out an email every month and uh information is passed down the chain of command that way. As of right now, uh we do not have a functioning training committee.
Thank you.
In reading in here, the training officer or individual in charge uh is also in charge of writing the curriculum for that program.
We do have, we do have training uh uh officers for each shift. Those individuals help facilitate trainings um on duty for each shift. But um. Uh, it does not go as far as curriculum for paramedic- paramedicine or uh EMT or anything like that. Because that is all handled by the state and the DEA and all that stuff. That would more so be to something maybe uh uh departmental SOPs and stuff like that. Uh, fire ground operations and stuff that we handled, uh that would be put together through the training committee and uh executed that way.
I was a little concerned in one thing I saw in here. Um, that um Michael, you you really were not interested in the REED program. Because you did not want to spend additional time away from your family and so on on there. I certainly can understand that. And at the same time, uh as I look at this and 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 I don't have the curriculum, so unfortunately I can't compare. It would seem to me that uh the individuals coming out of the REED program might be far better qualified than the ones coming out of the program. That may not be true at all. Uh, I would think the additional clinical time would certainly have been uh important. That has nothing, Michael, to do with you. I'm just on a program on there as we look at this. Because overall, as we look down the road, you know, our, what programs are we going to go to? It's kind of our responsibility to oversee the fire department, see what they're doing and what's best for the firemen that are online and the EMT personnel. Yeah.
Uh, uh, just to touch on that point real quick, um. As it stands now, out of the, I want to say four, potentially five, um forgive me if I'm wrong, but I want uh four. Uh, we've only had one individual out of uh dozens even come close to not succeeding through school VMS. On the other hand, as of right now, where it stands, we have multiple members uh struggling through the REED program. So there is some discrepancy on how the REED program is being handled and taught at this time.
Anything indication as why? Is it a more difficult program?
Um, yeah, actually, there have been um a few concerns brought up from members of the program right now. Uh, just coming to guys such as myself who have some time on and have been through paramedic school. And also go to, have also went to a different paramedic school compared to them. And just uh come comparing the two, you're right. Uh, completely a lot more workload on them for clinical hours and stuff. It seems to be um, again, a little bit more in-depth, but not necessarily um what's needed. And uh a lot and a lot of guys feel that there's information that is just not being given correctly. And they're also struggling with these um adaptive tests that were not in the original. Um. I'm sorry. Um, this escaping my mind right now. Uh, their original syllabus, that's what it is. Their original syllabus, it wasn't um included in it. And then later they were told they were unable to pass this class. Um, unless they pass these adaptive tests. And we've had members take these tests over and over and over again and not be able to pass these adaptive tests. Um, and they are being compensated every time they take these tests because these are mandatory. So you imagine one individual taking an adaptive test, fail that adaptive test. It's mandatory that they pass it, so every time they take it, it's mandatory. And they've taken it at least ten, twenty times. And it's at least, I'm not sure what, how long it is, but at least an hour apiece. It's going to add up between six people. And from my understanding, all of them are struggling in that aspect. I'm also under under the impression that it's also being handled right now. Um, there's something being done about that. But just goes to show that all, it wasn't all ironed out perfectly for this class. Uh, especially with it being the first of its kind.
Does the state of Indiana certify these programs?
Uh, I believe there is some type of accreditation that they have to get to be able to put this on, yes. But I, that is above my par grade. I have no idea, honestly.
Just for clarity, is is the REED program currently the only program that is eligible for overtime pay?
So that is what it appears to be. Um, the school VMS program was uh an option for these guys to go to. Um, that was ultimately denied from the chief's office. Uh, we had multiple members that were also in the class of St- going to Sinclair College. Which would actually be a degree that they would receive uh in that class, so it would be even.
It would be towards a paramedic.
Yeah, it would be even.
If you go get an.
Yeah, it would be even higher.
Right.
Uh, than what REED is even providing. Um, those individuals were actually about to go to that class and begin and and within days. And when it came to pay for the class, um, this was right at the height of the the beginning of administration change. Um, they were denied and ultimately those guys that were going to the Sinclair College were put into the REED program. Uh, and while those guys were put into the REED program, while others sought out the school VMS, they were denied being able to go there. But we have a whole nother group of individuals about to start the school VMS, I believe, next month. So it's a whole nother set of guys underneath seniority of Michael Stolzvis. And so we talk about budget, well, we had the budget for six guys or for seven guys, potentially eleven, back in twenty twenty four. Sent five guys. Uh, and save money on the sixth, could have compensated these guys for their overtime hours. Said no to them and then we're sending another class into the school VMS next month, but we'll compensate them. So it just makes no sense really why these guys wouldn't be compensated in the same class during the same, the same year. And the chief's office claimed budgetary constraints, just.
As a new uh fireman, um. And I know uh you go over to Columbus to go to school uh for a period of time and you come back. In any of your orientation, do you have, have you been told that you have to receive permission uh from the chief uh before you enter into an EMS school?
Uh, no, there is no clear cut, hey, you need to ask permission before you go to any paramedic school. That is not something that is routinely set down and told as a new fireman you're hired on, no. What you're told is, is you are. What you're told is, is you are expected and you will, if you plan to be here, you will get your paramedicine within five years. And that's that. The way an individual is chosen to go to paramedic school is usually on a seniority-based and interest-based uh process. So from top to bottom, the last guys that went to paramedic school, they'll go and we'll go underneath the list. The next guy's in seniority, the option will be given, interest will be gathered. And you are now eligible to go because you're next in seniority. And usually that is uh you are approached by the chief of V M S. It was the exact same way that Michael Stolfish was approached. Um so there's no living expectation that there's some training request form that you have to fill out or that you have to request a specific class or anything like this. It's always been, oh, I have to go be a paramedic within five years. The city is obligated to cover the cost of that during that five years. And I go based on when I'm ready. That's, that's how it's always been, at least since I, since I've been here. And the more senior medics have also agreed that that's the way it's been. Uh Stolfish and Hodapp, the other individual in this class, both have seniority over these next guys going into this class. Hodapp has seniority over some guys in the current class. Um and uh I believe Stolfish falls in the middle of the current class in this next class right now. So based on seniority, if we were going strictly by seniority, these two guys, uh Stolfish and Hodapp would be the ones that would be compensated and sent to paramedic school next. Um but for whatever reason, they're being skipped over. They're not being compensated. The class before and the class after is being compensated purely for what it seems is that they went out and got it funded by the state and got a uh state-funded class that this, that the department didn't pay for. And that's what they're claiming uh is voluntary, when all the classes are voluntary. Because you can tell me that I, I, I can go to a class this year or next year and I'll voluntarily go next year if I want to. Or I'll voluntarily go this year, but I know it's mandatory. I know it's requirement.
Yeah, I, I'd like to take a moment to kind of get us refocused here. We're, we're really comparing different. We're getting more into this class versus this class and all this other stuff. And the, the reason we're here is to talk about the grievance and is he eligible for, to be compensated. I understand. Thank you for the background as we're trying to get a better understanding. Um, a couple of things, a couple of questions I have. What do you consider all costs? Uh I do know, I do know that it's, it's, it's been mentioned a couple of times that we'll cover all costs.
Yeah, so forgive me if I leave anything out, but um my understanding is all cost is the cost of the class and the cost of any mandatory hours put in, that the, that covers it all. Whether it's his clinical hours, his lifetime, we know study time's not being paid for. Um if it was in a, a further um distance, even uh mileage could be compensated under F L S A, all that stuff. So um those specifics that I just stated would be what I consider all cost.
Okay.
Um there really wouldn't be any other costs associated uh besides those.
So I'm going to kind of kick myself here, but I, I remember you saying that uh School of E M S is, was a hybrid class.
Yes.
But I don't see any online hours accounted for in the School of E M S ledger. And with those online hours and even classroom hours, is it a situation where he can a student can choose their hours? Or is there any hours that are specifically set up for something that has to be done on these dates? Or is there an option to choose various dates?
Yeah, so you have, um School V M S traditionally will have a um uh a course to where you can go and access it and you have whatever you're supposed to do for that week, set up for that week. So it is on your time when you access it and get it done. But the time uh constraints are set. You can't go over um.
Explain that.
Yeah, so like, say if I had a test today, my set time is an hour. That's what I'm getting and that's what I claim on uh my overtime for that, because it's a mandatory test. I had to take it. Um it would be no different if I was sitting in person in class, taking my test at that time. Uh so that one hour would equal one hour of uh overtime. Or uh uh mandatory um class uh visits going into class every hour. He's there, mandatory overtime. So um, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I, I'm just trying to follow. I mean, it gave me more flexibility, which I, I definitely appreciate. I'm a hybrid employee myself. Um and one of the things I'm trying to understand is, does he set his schedule?
Uh.
Or, or is it, I've got X amount of dates and I have to choose one of these dates?
So basically, you got, I got this week to get this much stuff done. And every single thing is timed. It, it has, it's, there's no way for him to say I'll, I'd spend an hour on here, but I'm going to write down two hours. And it's all logged and everything. So there's a track record and everything of how long he spent on it, what the set time was and everything like that. So, so.
I have the syllabus here.
State your name.
Or Michael Stolfish.
Okay.
I have a couple of copies here if you guys want to look at them.
We have those. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to figure out, and I'm, I'm just asking questions to gain a better understanding.
Yeah.
So you have, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys have five years to get your, your certification, your paramedicine, right? Is that, so when you sign up for an E M S class, we'll just use the one here, School of E M S. Do you have six months, once you enroll to get that certification? Is it a year? Is it self, self uh exploratory? What is it? That's what I'm trying to understand.
Uh the School of E M S is eleven months.
Okay, so there is a time period.
There, every week, we have a set curriculum that we need to basically go through all the lectures. There's roughly, I'd say thirty hours of lectures and everything, not thirty. Yeah, close. Every week. It varies a lot. And then there's a test at the end of every week. And then there's four where there's actual real tests where you have to there's a webcam and everything set up and that's like at the end of each semester. So it is just like a college course, it's just online.
Okay.
Is that available twenty-four hours during the day?
So yes, it is available through the week. For that week's curriculum is available all week long. But you have until midnight, Sunday night, to have the test completed for that week, including, and you can't a- access the test until you have all the lectures completed as well. So there's still a lot of schoolwork, admittedly even maybe more than what the Reed program spends in class. Whereas we're just listening to lectures, taking notes, making flashcards, things like that. But we have to go through all that before we can get to our tests at the end of the week. And that test has to be completed before you can go on to the next week.
My next question would be, is there any of this, and I'm, I'm asking for my edification, right? Is there any of this that can be done during your work shift?
Yes, a lot of it is done during the work shift. I'm not asking for any of that, actually. I'm just asking for clinical and live week hours.
And then we have also too, I, I would assume that the administration would support work being done during uh op, you know, opportunities to be done during their shift.
I would assume so.
Yeah, okay. All right. That gives me a better understanding of that. My next question is, um you were hired, were you hired prior to the new?
Same day.
Same day, exactly the same day. So you are not grandfathered in under an old, the old.
It was originally, I signed the pre-employment agreement of the prior administration.
Okay.
Which they scrapped and brought in the new one.
Okay, so, but you weren't, you weren't doing one and then changed to another, is what I'm getting at.
Was for almost five months.
Five months.
So clarify, when you're, you've completed the course now, so.
Not yet.
Well, let, let's say you have, and so you would want to be compensated for four hundred and eight clinical hours then?
Roughly, yes.
Okay. No, no time for taking the course?
I could do that on my own time. I could study when I want to study.
Just the clinical hours?
Just the time I'm spending physically doing the clinical hours and the live weeks. I can study on my own time. All I'm asking is to be treated like the rest of the guys.
Clarification, can you define live?
So there's three weeks where we have to spend four days up in Winchester at the host facility. Where we actually do our skills in front of our instructors, literally just live in person.
You have to be on site. Okay, gotcha. That's all I have.
I think that's all I have.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You guys want to take a short break? Because that was over an hour. We'll take a five-minute recess. I'm sure Mr. Price needs some water. All right, we're back from our break. Um I do have a question for the grieving team. Uh any of your, any of your next witnesses, are they going to provide new evidence? Or are they just here to substantiate the information that was in this packet?
Hello, Jeremy Blake, Lieutenant Engine Five, First Vice, uh fourteen oh eight. Uh Michael Stolfish wasn't privy to this and I was just researching the date. Um it was the exact same day that I was notified that the chief's office, in the final step of the grievance process, denied his grievance. We were asked as an E board to meet for ongoing, ongoing E M S negotiations for upcoming uh changes in our E M S programs. Uh and in that meeting, it was discussed that, by the E M S chief, our current E M S chief, Nick Arbogast, um that he wanted to create a pipeline for civilians to pay for their civilian paramedic classes. And I objected strongly and said that I do not want to entertain this on the same day that one of my members was denied his classes to be paid. Chief, the current chief of E M S, Nick Arbogast, stated to me that he does not agree with the current chiefs. He agrees that they should be compensated. Um Chief Kinder and I believe Chief Clark was in that meeting as well as a few other E board members. So I think that's a key uh information to pass along there. Uh Michael Stolfish, on his final meeting with the, the chief's office, the same day prior, um he was uh told, uh I don't want to speak for Michael, so I'm going to invite Michael up here to speak on what he was told about his current class and maybe being into approved for the July class. So I'll let him speak on that. So I think that's important information to have as well.
The general question is still out there. Is there anybody else who's outside of Mr. Stolfish that's going to provide new facts? No?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, okay. That'll weigh that all.
Would like to hear.
Oh, absolutely.
So um today, we had the meeting, oh, every time, Michael Stolfish.
Thank you, sir.
Um, the day we were, we had the meeting that the chief's office denied the grievance. I asked Chief Kinder if I dropped out of this class and I dropped, and I joined the School of E M S program that's starting in July, if I would get paid. And he assured me I would get paid if I would drop out and join back up. That's all I got.
Is there any questions before we move on with that comment? Two gentlemen? And we will uh rest your side and we will start the administrative side.
Good evening. Chief Kinder, Richmond Fire. I was going to start with my grievance resolve, but since Jordan Price, I already read it. Are you guys good with me skipping that part of?
Sure.
It's already been put into exhibit. Um I'm going to read a statement, basically break this down. Starting in the first week of twenty twenty-four, myself, Chief Clark and, and Lieutenant Hank Dennis. It was brought to my attention the second day in office that the distinct, the, the six medics that were going to send to Sinclair program. Anyway, the decision was made into twenty twenty-four to send six members to the Reed IV tech paramec program here in Richmond and not send them to Sinclair in Ohio. The twenty twenty-four budget line for the program would pay for those members to attend the planned class. The budget line for the E M S training is used to pay for E M S paramedic school and E M T school and other E M S training programs. Those six members started that medic class in August or July of twenty twenty-four. And they will be completed in August of twenty twenty-five. Paramedic school on average is about ten thousand dollars per person. Paramedic school takes between eleven and thirteen months to complete. We also send all our new hire for E M T school that has a cost of around fifteen hundred dollars per person. There are only four times a year that that school accepts students. That's a six-week course to complete. So this takes a lot of planning from the administration. We sent fourteen E M Ts in school. Overtime is to cover, to fill those spots while those members are in, in paramedic school or while they're attending their E M T, they, they also pay while they're attending their E M T school, not overtime, but straight time. The cost is, is part of the contract, a new hire's sign for the reimbursement. This is all planned and budgeted by the administration months in advance. The administration places into the paramedic class by seniority first. We try to put members into a class in their second or the third year. Their first year in the department is full. We have to get their E M T first. After the first year, they have to get firefight one and two, hazmat ops, awareness, driver op are all completed while they're on their probationary period. Michael Stolfish was on probation. He was hired January one of twenty twenty-four. So in August of, late August of twenty twenty-four, I was advised by Chief Hank Dennis that the School of E M S was placing a grant-based free paramedic school in Winchester, Indiana. There were six members that we'd already put in an IV tech program and we could not switch those current members attending that class. The Reed paramedic class had been in plans for several months. In early September, I had a meeting with the acting unit president, Chris Morris, over several members that were unit president, Chris Morris, and assistant chief, James Clark, over members wanting to enroll the E M S paramedic school in Winchester. This class was an unscheduled and only released a few weeks before the start of the date. So basically, it was released in the first of August and the start date was in September thirtieth. So you had eight weeks. We didn't have enough time to switch the six members we had already in school to that free class. During that meeting, I was notified that there were five members that were requiring to take that class. I advised the meeting with Lieutenant Clark and, I mean Lieutenant Morris and Chief Clark. We could not have eleven medics in school at the same time. During that meeting, we discussed the administration would not support the School of E M S at that time. With the amount of planning, budget, overtime it would take, it was not feasible at that time. I did say in that meeting, I could not stop anyone from taking that class voluntarily. If they did take that School of E M S class voluntarily, they would be no overtime paid or financial help at any time. Because we felt at the time, the contract they'd signed, if we didn't help them at all and they failed the class, then they'd come back and say, well, we weren't paid. We want paid now. So I advised that the next year class, we would be budgeting for six to eight members into the next paramedic school. The Reed, the Reed class is here in Richmond and we want to support it. And at the time, it was, the school of EMS wasn't available for us at the time when we made that decision. So after meeting with Chris firefighter, or Lieutenant Morris, we were, he relayed to me that he did meet with all the members that were inquiring for the school EMS. He told me he made it very clear the position the administration was taking at that time. There was two members decided to take the class voluntarily, firefighter Stolffus and firefighter Hodapp. Firefighter Stolffus was, as I said before, was on probation. Firefighter Hodapp did not want to attend the Reed Paramedic because of a family issue at that time. Administration has placed other members that decide not to volunteer for the class, enrolled in the class that starts this coming August. So those members that were looking into that class, after we had that meeting with Lieutenant Morris and he advised them, those members now are in the school EMS class for this, starting July. We also have three members going to the Reed program. So we're using both programs to benefit. Because some, the Reed program is more hands-on, in-person. It is a, it's, it's not a, it's a paramedic degree program, so you get a degree in that program. It's not a paramedic license program. The school EMS is a paramedic license program. The Richmond Fire Department only requires the license, but the degree program is an option to send our members that more, need more hands-on training. I understand that Mr. Stolffus is upset not receiving overtime for his class and clinical time as he volunteered to attend. We did explain there is a process of budgeting and planning. As the chief of fire department, I have to have the ability to budget and plan. If a member can volunteer for a class that was not approved, then their request to be paid, back pay would take away that ability that I need to run the Richmond Fire Department. That's my statement. Here's the memo of when Stolffus was hired and sworn in. Contract that he signed was in the same calendar year. I was told by our city law at that time that any member that was hired and still on probation, we could go back and up the contract that they, that we had brought into place to the board of works. And so all the people that were on probation at that time and all our new hires from January one till today are all under the new city paramedic contract.
Is there a separate contract for paramedics?
No, not anymore. That's, that's the contract that I come to board of works every Thursday and we swear that's the contract that, and at that time, he was still in probation, so we, and by, we had permission from law that we could go back and everybody that was still in probation, that would they be on the new contract. This is a continuing education form that if we don't put you in it and you, and you're advised by a chief and there's strings all the time, and these get turned into Greg Moore, and they all get to my desk, and it's fire or EMS, and I get to, I'm the kind of final say-so on depending on the budget line and what class they want to take and the need for the department at the time and the ability for me to plan. It's either accepted or denied. So.
Are you the only one presenting from the administrative side?
Chief, I'm going to go back to the forum, the last forum that you just showed up there. Now, explain again about how you utilize that forum.
This is a, a training forum that employees turn in if they want to go to outside training. If we don't apply, if we don't perform the training ourselves, or we have to send them to a specialized class, if anything EMS-related or fire-related, this forum comes through my office.
What's the difference in their presentation here that they said there was no forms?
There was never one turned in because, like I said, we never, when we had the meeting, the administration made it clear that at that time, we weren't going to support that class. And there was never any, anything turned in for us, even to deny.
In the original statement, there was a comment, I'm trying to clarify this a little bit. A circle that kind of jumped out a little at me. He was seemingly approved by, where is it? Says, it's in exhibit six, page two. Michael Stolffus enrolled in a recognized, cost-effective training program, which the department has used multiple times previously after seemingly having approval from chief of EMS, thereby fulfilling the department's stated staffing and certification goals in a fiscally reasonable manner.
The paramedic program and they have used the school EMS before. When I came in in 2024, the very first thing, it wasn't available at that time. The past administration, I was told that they weren't in favor of it. So it wasn't an option when I first come in. So we had to make a decision on sending them to Ohio or start and try to build the Reed program for a place here in town for our people to go. The training itself, the training, Hank Dennis was the acting, or he was the assistant, or EMS chief at the time. And he's always notifying when, when classes or schools come over, they, they can send out emails, hey, there's open classes here, here. He was just notifying them that there was a paramedic program, because usually the paramedic programs put out months and months and months in advance. This one landed, basically it competed with Reed. And there's some state politics involved with that, you know, that stuff. But it was basically put out eight weeks before the class started. My people had already been approved and in a class while that was going on. Like I said, I read budget for it. I was on the 24 budget, was the past administration's budget. So.
So while you're in that same exhibit, if you move over to page three and section four, in their bullet point there, chief, it says, training request forms are not utilized for paramedic school within the department. This has been confirmed within the department training chief. Training chief Moore said the training request forums that the department has or has not been utilized for paramedic program and not meant to be used for a paramedic program. Historically, paramedic enrollment is followed a seniority and interest-based system with no formal.
The reason there's, the reason there's no retraining request for paramedicine is because the administration, we place them in the paramedic class. We go to them, we find by seniority, and usually the six, the seven people, we, we're the ones that, once we get the list of people that are going to go, we're the one that does all the work to get them there.
So who makes the request? Who makes the request to go to the course?
Well, it's, actually, it's, it's the administration does the part of, like I said, by seniority. Because the first year, they're on the department, they have so many things they have to go through their first year. So we want to get them past their first year before we enroll them in a medic class. So it's by seniority, because usually it's a 11-month class, so it's a year, basically a year of their life. So we try to give them a year two and three, so they had some time on the department and, and got some experience as far as being on, on the AMOSSes and doing their EMT skills, which hopefully makes them into a better medic. That answer your question?
Yeah, so I, I guess, like I said, I'm just trying to gain a better understanding. So Mr. Stolffus was five months on the department at the time?
Yeah, it was.
Four, four. He was four. Okay, so obviously, I, I wouldn't think he would be eligible based on seniority. Yeah.
You talk about four months.
How? Yeah. Ten months, okay. All right. Thanks for that clarification.
Maybe your interest was higher, because I had a question on, on interest basis. I would think any new fireman that accepts a job with the fire department would certainly have a, well, interest in becoming, if he can, he's not going to be working for you.
Well, it's also, we choose by the EMS chief and comes to me and says, I think this guy's ready at year two. This guy, maybe we might want to wait another year on this one. Because we have a five-year window, so as long as we have them in there before their five years is up. Like I said, but we control that as far as that planning goes. Because we've had some guys that are year one, are ready to go, and they're fantastic. And some guys are year two and three are still saying, I, I just need a little more time. So we're trying to, we're trying, I mean, we understand that they have to go. We know they have to go, but we try to make it where they're ready to go, not put them right there before they're ready.
How do we tell new fire personnel coming on board exactly what the policy is to go to the EMS classes? That it has to be approved by you? Now, you talk about seniority and everything in there, but how do they know exactly that this is a procedure you got to go through? Do you go to your EMS?
EMS chief, the EMS chief tentatively comes to me as a budget season, like this year. We come to budget season, last, we're the last budget season.
Right.
And hey, we got a lot of guys that we got to get through this, and we're trying to look at the financials of it. And because that, that line item on the budget not only pays for the paramedic class, it also pays for all the EMTs. So there's a cost and all that, and with us being down so many people at this point, we're trying to send six at a time, which is a lot. Per, for herley, I'd like to send three at a time, because we can get some pace. But we're at the point in our, at the department's level of staffing right now that we're sending them a little bit faster than we want to, but that's just the nature of the game we're having to play.
Okay, then if that's true, when the, and I forget the individual's name now, told Michael, sign up for the class, then wouldn't he have permission to go to the class?
Well, you have to remember at that point in time, the contracts had come out, the, the new contracts, because we would discontinue what was, in the chief's office, the chief had signed those contracts. And those contracts, they became a problem because the past administration would pick and choose who paid them, if they left the department, who paid the money back. And I felt like that the city's invested in the medics, not me personally, and not my office, it's the city. So we went through that process last year, and I know you guys were both part of that. And we got those contracts made up, so that way it's, it's, it's a contract with the city. And the fire department still controls when they go to school and all that stuff, and we're under that contract too, to make sure we meet those criteria. But like I said, I have to budget and plan out all that.
You certainly understand the budget part, your planning on there. Part of my question still would go back is how do we really clarify to that, that new fireman on there, the process that they have to go through? And in your budgeting that you do, I, I went and got a copy of, of your budget, especially on the EMS, on kind of look at that, because one of your areas, you talk about funding and budgeting, and I can understand how council tries to cut your budget back. But, you know, when I, when I looked at this, I was, I guess I was a little bit surprised when I looked at the amount of money that you have. You know, and, and looking at this sheet I had and at the cash flow statement, you know, you started off 25 with $4 million, and in 24, you had 2.6 on there you had. So that's probably the most assets I've seen in, in a city or a county.
Well, EMS, I mean, the EMS, I mean, running EMS is a business and it does bring, provide money for the fire department. And the budgeted money out of the EMS, it pays for equipment, it pays for overtime, it pays for all of our tools and like, all that stuff comes out of that, so.
Would council not allow you to use that EMS funding to send these?
Well, it's not only, it's not only the EMS fund, it's also the overtime. And right now, I'm going to be, I mean, I'm going to be short. I already know it, you know? And so we're trying to figure out how we fix that problem right now, without getting into great details.
Right.
It's all, it's budgetary and planning, so.
With, with the new people we've given you or that you've signed up for us the last few weeks, I think we've done five, how sure are you going to be the rest of the year?
Well, I hope, those three leave for OFA, which is Ohio Fire Academy to do their EMT. So they'll be gone for the next six weeks. And I have five more in the process at the physical point, so we're just waiting on there to get back to me. And once we get that, we'll still be down six.
There's kind of a couple of things that jump out to me. One is, we, we did, we had a, we had a, some, an agreement with the previous chief who sent people to paramedic, paramedic school. And we, we reviewed that and we updated it. Mr. Stolffus is somewhere kind of in the, in the middle of this, this update. What I need to understand is, is how did he get enrolled in the class specifically? Who gave him the okay to go ahead and enroll in the class?
It didn't come from the chief's office.
No, that came from, it's in here. I can find it someplace. It was, maybe.
You can.
I think it was Mr. Dennis.
Hank Dennis.
Hank Dennis. Mr. Dennis, would you like to speak on that for a moment?
Hello, my name's Albert Dennis. I'm Lieutenant Engine Three. I'm also one of the trustees with the local 1408. At that time, I was the EMS chief during this whole thing. Like Chief Kinder mentioned, I was the one that was notified. I don't remember exactly how, whether it was from our district rep or whomever through someone in the state of this funding, of the grant-funded class of, hey, you know, this is an option. So I brought it to his attention. At that time, obviously, we were still working on the Reed aspect of everything. And I was told, hey, go to the individuals that said no, see if there's an interest. And that's exactly what I did, is, hey, would you be interested, yes or no? Got the information and then gave it back to the chief's office to then, you know, do, you know, make the decision on how to handle it next. Because it's not, my position at that time, it's not, like you said, he, the chief's office, the, the chief and assistant chief are the one who handles the budget and gets to ultimately decide who goes and not goes. I don't get to put that stamp of approval.
So specifically, you presented a list of names, Mr. Stolffus was on the list.
Correct.
Did you tell him to enroll in the class?
Not enroll, but it was informing him of all the information of, hey, this class is here. You know, I informed him of, hey, deadline is this day, this day, this day. And like the chief and the local has, had said, it was a very, very short window, and they had to go through a selection process with the state to even get approved. It wasn't just a, hey, you go, apply, you got it. There was a process for it.
When you shared information about the course in September of 2024, were you aware at that time that it would not be eligible for overtime pay?
That, I don't remember, what, you guys know the exact date of which? Yeah, yeah. I, at that time, I did not know anything about that. It was just, hey, get interest. Of, hey, maybe. It wasn't decided or anything like that at that time. Because like I said, I had, I don't know what the, the budget and what that numbers were at that time. So I was just gathering interest and seeing if anybody would be interested. That was what I was doing, and bringing it to the chief's office to then make an informed and educated decision.
So then, I'm just asking a question. It was not formally approved? I, I'm just trying to get, get a better understanding.
Jordan Price, so as you can see, based off Mr. Paul's question to the chief's office, he didn't give you a clear answer on where a new firefighter would find this information or where it's located or anything, because it doesn't exist. There is no formal way of doing it. Like I've stated in the packet, past practice is the seniority-based and interest-based. And after the EMS chief, and this applies to me and my situation on when I went to paramedic school and the guys that went with me before me and after me. When the EMS chief comes to you, as such as he did with Michael Stolffus, and he did give Michael Stolffus the information to go sign up, it's here, this is where you go sign up, et cetera, et cetera. That is the same exact way that every other paramedic goes to paramedic school on the department as of right now. The training request form that he brought up, again, as stated in the packet, is only for voluntary trainings. It does say EMS on the form, but there are types of EMS training that we can go to and sign up for that will make our skills better and improve us as paramedic or EMTs, but it's not a mandatory requirement, such as a paramedic school. Such as if I wanted to go to a cardiology class, I could sign up for the cardiology class, fill out the reimbursement paper and give it to the chief's office. That is some type of class I would fall under that reimbursement form. If I wanted to go to a rope training, rope tech, rope rescue class, that is a fire-based training that would go under that reimbursement, because I would pay for the class. If they approved it, I would pay for it, and it would go that way. There, that does not exist for a paramedic program. And like Chief, former Chief Dennis did state that he did follow the chain of command, just as he would do any other time with gaining interest and getting people to go to, into paramedic school. Because as soon as the paramedic, the. Because as soon as the paramedic, uh, the EMS chief gets your interest and everybody's like, yep, yep, I'm good. Next thing you know, you're signing yourself up. The, the department can't sign you up at all. This is something that you have to do on yourself. So Michael Stolffus did it himself as required.
Thank you for that.
Assistant Chief Clark, I'd like to bring you guys to exhibit six, and I think this is gonna speak volumes. When he refers to the meeting that we had with the executive board.
Which page?
Six. Exhibit six, page four. Now, we did have a meeting with a couple of the guys after that was brought to our attention, there was interest. Uh, two were present, uh, the union rep, Chris Morse was in there. We advised them that we can't stop you from going to training. If you wanna go to training, that's gonna be on you. Uh, we're not gonna pay for it, but if you wanna go to training, just like any other job, you wanna go to training, you, you can go on your training. That, we can't stop you. But we can do, as a department, we can backfill for the live weeks. The department pays for you, or pays the backfill of overtime when you're on those live weeks. But we can't stop you from going to training. We'll stop, we will support you to further your education. But just know that we do have plans to send you on the next group to the paramedic school. So the two that were in that class understood that. It, later on, the other three was advised of that, including Stolffus. The last grievance meeting we had that Lieutenant Blake referred to, I point blank asked Stolffus, okay, if you were made aware that we're not gonna pay overtime for that class, why did you continue? Because, and his answer was, because I would have been out the $150. So now he comes back eight months later wanting us to pay for it. After he enrolled in the class voluntarily. And I just wanna stress that fact. So, and that's what the chief was referring to, managerial rights. We gotta have time to plan, put people in class. And as you said, it's not so structured and majority of the time it is seniority based. But at the time, the skills level at an EMT sometimes are not there. So on the advisement of medical direction or an EMS chief, we have to go by what they advise us on. So if they advise us, this person is not ready to go, please wait till next year. We have to trust their judgment because they, they got a higher medical authority than we do. Now, I'm not gonna get into semantics on which program is better than the other one. Because we have had people go to the school VMS and they're great medics. Uh, and some people do learn differently. That is not the issue. The issue is, it was a voluntary training on his own accord that pretty much taken it out of the chief's hand. And what the ramifications of this, that the union doesn't understand, if I myself go to training in Florida, I come back, it, it relates to my job, it's required on my, my job, I need you to pay for it now. And I'll have no rights as a managerial of the budget to say yea or nay. I'll just have to pay. So there's some rights that the managerial, that we have to have in budget planning. And you can't just volunteer for something, come back and demand payment for it. So that, that's my stance on it. And do you guys have any questions for me in particular?
I guess one of the questions that is, is I've read all this material and trying to get a handle on it. I guess I haven't been able to find anything here that's really clear that tells exactly this is the procedure. And it, it, it seems, you know, uh, as you talk on the volunteer part, and I can understand, I certainly understand the budgeting part of it and then planning. Cause when they're gone, you gotta fill those positions that.
On both sides, you pay the employee and you backfill, yes, correct.
I, I can certainly understand that, but it, it seems to me, and, and I've quickly gone through your contract that you had. I had the 2024 one, I don't have the, well, I got the new one, but I didn't have time to look, see what the difference was in that. I'm trying to clarify this so, so we don't run, I'm looking at this so we don't run into this again. So there isn't any misunderstanding as to how a person goes. And I was trying to find in here where the person and, and the way they said it, where they told him about the class in Winchester and to go ahead and sign up for that, which was his supervisor on there. And to me, if that supervisor told him to do that, uh, then it's possible that maybe we should or shouldn't do the back pay on there.
Well, your supervisor that you're referring to is Lieutenant Hank Dennis that you just heard from?
Okay.
Just advised him of the school. It's no different that I advise another employee that there's training available. Now, whether they wanna submit a training request to go to that, depending on the training, uh, they could do that.
But then tell me.
Okay, but there's never been a training request for paramedicine. And the reason is, is when they're sit, when they're, the last interview that an employee has is usually in front of the chief's desk. They're going over it, they're talking about their future with the Richmond Fire Department. Within that, they talk about the paramedicine requirement. Yes, you're required, and those contracts that you guys see every Thursday, you're required to be a paramedic within the first five years.
Right.
The department will pay for you to go to become a paramedic within that five years.
Okay.
If you fail within that, that one time the Richmond Fire Department pays for it, then extension is made to seven years. On that, it is on your own dime after that, because we have fulfilled our part of the contract. We gave you an opportunity, if you didn't pass, that, that's on you, you're on it, on yourself.
I read.
And that was referred to, uh, by Jordan Hunter earlier, that we do have one employee that is on that statute currently. He didn't pass the first time, that we paid for, this time, he's on his own. And it is the school EMS that he's doing.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
You mean Mr., Mr. Price, you said Mr. Hunter?
Oh, sorry. Yep, you're, yes, I stand corrected, sorry.
No problem.
You know, I understand that, I guess, and, and I just look and I, I'm just thinking, chief, as we look at this, the future, how we can clarify this so that we don't have this misunderstanding and, and obviously, um, the gentleman did not know that he had to send a form in, uh, to get your approval for budgeting purposes and so on. And I guess I just don't see that in here as I'm reading this any place and, and.
Every time we have a new hire, the new hires have a three day orientation.
Okay.
All those things, they get a book of everything that we, is required to do. And I mean, it's as simple as their pass codes on their Arcadia's, all the things that you have to do. The paramedic is explained that they have five years, this is all explained to them upfront. When they make, when they sign the contracts, they sign. Those contracts are explained to them letter, word for word, this is what this means, all this means, this is why you're signing. We will pay for you to go to Mexico. Within five years, we cover that. And if you don't pass it, or you do pass it and leave, this contract affects you.
Payback, yeah.
Yes, that's what that was about.
So does it say in there that they have to submit a form to you?
If it's outside training, it's not, and it's not part, if they're not part of the accepted class that we've already sent, and it's outside that, yes.
And that's in this policy?
It's in the training policy, anything, anytime you go outside training, that's not.
Could we get a copy of that?
That's not fire funded, you know what I mean? If it's not fire related or we're, cause I mean, right now, I literally have a firefighter that's in firefighter one and two on his own that we didn't even know about. And so depending on this, this right tonight, he could go, well, I want paid now. And we didn't even know he was even in it. So it's, it's, that's why I said, it's, it's, it takes away our ability to, to plan and then do the things that we have to do from our side. That's, that's the whole point of this.
Well, the policies you're talking about would clearly explain to him that if his supervisor suggested he enroll in this course, he still has to go to you and get permission, and that's in that policy.
Even the six I sent, we had to make sure those six were the right six that we sent. And they were, like I said, it was by seniority. And they were the original six that were budgeted to go to a different program that we decided that, at that point to try to, uh, make the re IV tech program, which, which helps us because it's a local program. It's, and that program is, is in, they're in, then in, in service program where they're hands on. And it's not an online program.
Is that this policy 1008 that you're talking about?
I have, I don't have it in front of me.
That's Richmond Fire Department Policy Manual, Tuition Reimbursement?
You have to, I have to, without looking it up and reading it.
It, it does say 1008.3. Procedure approval of fire chief or the authorized designee should be obtained in advance of enrollment. And I'd have to read more of this, the enrollment and what, but, um, this is more like going to a, um, a university or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's more for going to get an associate's degree. Okay.
Without sounding like I'm cross-exam, Mr. Stolffus, when you signed up, did you believe that you had approval to sign up for that course? Did you know that it would have to go to the chief? So, so upon Mr. Dennis's comments like, hey, I advised this was out here, right? That was your, that was what you took as the go ahead to sign up? I'm trying to, like I said, I'm just trying to get a better understanding.
Michael Stolffus. So Chief Dennis brought this to my attention. And, uh, he told me it's a good program, a lot of people went through it, it's validated. We've had a lot of success with it. He said, there's also a state funded grant that you have to apply for. He said, they're only gonna go for 20 people. And, uh, I said, okay, well, I'll give it some thought. So I talked to some of my peers and my supervisor and the acting, uh, union president at the time was the one that advised me to sign up so I get in that 20. So I signed up on, have the dates here. On August 29th, 2024, I had the conversation with an acting union president, Morris. And he advised me to sign up, he sent me the link so I could go apply for the state funding. And it wasn't until September 18th, which is almost a month later, that the chief's office said they weren't going. And this was way after I'd already been accepted. I'd already got the funding, I'd already paid for the course through the, through the grant. Chief Clark mentioned that, you know, I'm only out $150. $150 doesn't faze me, I'm not a kid. He asked me about monetary loss, what I would be out. But two things he didn't take into consideration is my integrity. I signed up for the class, I said I would go, they accepted me, I got the funds. I don't know the ramifications of misusing grant funds, but I don't wanna find out. That was one thing. Also, they mentioned that, um, I was too early in my career to go. I'm almost 32 years old. It's not too early to go. I was offered the REED program. I was an EMT for a month and they said I could go to REED program if I wanted to. So that argument is invalid completely because I didn't wanna go.
Let me ask.
Before I did, go ahead.
You, your, your intent was to, to go and obtain your, your paramedicine license, correct?
Correct.
Did you, were you seeking reimbursement at the time for your time that you had invested when you signed up for it? Was that in your mind? Did you think, did you think that was what was, it was gonna be available to you? I guess, I'm trying to figure out.
I assumed I would be taken care of just like every other person on the department.
And you mentioned the Mr. Morris, who's Mr. Morris?
He, is it here? He's right there. He was the one that, uh, sent me the link to sign up.
Okay, and he's your, he was your supervisor?
He was the acting union president at the time.
So he was not your EMS supervisor?
No, Chief Dennis was the one that brought the course to me. And then I approached my union president and asked him about it.
And he was the one that said to sign up?
He said, I advise you to sign up because there's only 20 and you might not get it. So I signed up three days later.
Okay.
Jeremy Blake again, uh, just a point of clarification on Michael's behalf. And obviously Lieutenant Morris can clarify this even further. But at the time, he was a probationary firefighter, so under our current system, they're homeless. They don't have a home, they don't have a bid position, so they stay at Station One quite a bit. So Lieutenant Morris is a lieutenant at Station One, so he is his first immediate supervisor. And also the lieutenant, or I'm sorry, the interim union president at the time. So our chain of commands, he would report to his lieutenant at Station One, which was Morris. He is under the EMS chief.
Chief, then as you delegate down to your battalion chiefs or lieutenants, would have the authority to tell folks to sign up for these classes without your permission?
Once we get the list, we, we make the first contact and get the things rolling. And then we, because we can't just, we have to, we can't sign them up, but we have to get them all ready. So that way when they do sign up, it's all, because we gotta, we gotta get POs and we have to start getting stuff to pay for it. So that's why I said, the budget part of it, we know who's going. And once we get that list of who's going, then we do that part going, and then they start signing up. And when they start signing up, then we kinda start the PO process of paying for that part of it. It's all, it's all part of the budget. In fact, one of the things I forgot to say, when, when the new hires come in, they have to sign on that, on the paramedic requirement for the form that they find, they have to read it and it, for writing and write it down, why is that that they're signing? But that, cause that contract comes to you guys after they've been hired. I know already this morning and then that contract comes. So we had them sign another piece of document in the office, the states, they are very aware of what they're signing, why they're signing it and how that is going to work down the road. So they get that contract with the city, that's, that's what they're under.
Just to be clear, this is the contract you're referring to that says, that states the city will pay? Correct?
Maybe the requirement, the comfort requirement, once I put you in the class. Like I said, we're the ones that do it.
I didn't read that part where it says you have to put me in the class.
Okay.
Chief, could you get us a copy of that form that they signed so that we could look at that?
It should be.
Yeah.
Guys do currently, you guys have a copy and?
Do I have that one?
Yeah, on that, there is no explanation of the process of going into paramedic school.
I think it's triple two or three.
Jeremy Blake again, I apologize, I'm really dry, we had a structured fire today and I haven't got enough water today, but, I, I think we're at, my little version of this is, we're in two contracts. And when we talk about these forms and we talk about approved, uh, classes, that's historically for continuing education classes. So that is our collective bargaining, uh, agreement contract, right? So then, when we have a separate contract for the new employee, uh, if, I think there's a clause missing that wouldn't, we wouldn't be in the situation that it says maybe with the chief's approval for the paramedicine. So the question that we're in is, does one contract override another contract? Because the new hires contract, in our opinion, doesn't need the chief's approval. Obviously, their argument is management rights, he does have chief's approval. So how does one contract override another contract is kind of where we're at.
I see, I see the gap. You know, that, that's, and that's what I'm trying to wrestle with here, I'll be honest with you. You have any, you have any other questions?
I don't have any more.
If not, we'll open it up for final remarks from the union first.
These are last remarks, Jordan Price, sorry. These are last remarks real quick from when, uh, Chief Clark came up here. When he stated about the meeting, um, the forms, et cetera. Again, I want to clarify and emphasize that all of this was post Michael Stolffus being, uh, applying, being accepted, going through orientation, um, obtaining his syllabus, et cetera, for this class. All this stuff happened post. All this stuff happened post. And then for them to start claiming this form is needed, that narrative only started coming about once Michael Stolffus started requesting compensation. Uh, it was never mentioned prior to. Uh, the guys that are currently in the class for Reed have no idea what this form is. They've never even heard of it. Older gentlemen on the department, when I asked about this form pertaining to it, they had no idea. So, um, this, that is an argument that they're trying to make fit this narrative, their narrative at least. The meeting with Lu- Lieutenant Morris, acting union president at the time, again, was informal, uh, was only to relay information. It was not, uh, anything formal to where Michael Stolffus would get an actual, uh, remark from the chief's office. And he wouldn't get that from Chief Kinder personally until later. So, uh, all this is still post, eh, him following the exact steps the department has been following the entire time he's been on the department, as well as I've been on the department. All steps were followed, same thing with the EMS chief coming down, getting interest, that has always been taken as you're going next. You go get ready, you go sign up. There obviously is some type of, uh, miscommunication issues between the chief's office, the EMS chief and them, uh, the chief and assistant chief. But I don't think that is on Michael Stolffus at all. That is not the fault of Michael Stolffus. He is doing what is expected to him as a firefighter and what has everybody that has come before him under, uh, the two contracts that exist, actually three contracts. The three paramedic contracts that exist, uh, he's done the same thing that everybody else has done before him.
Jeremy Blake again, obviously. I just, back to the two contracts, you know, that's where we're at, I feel like. I think it's key to note, uh, what's been discussed, but just to emphasize, the contract for the paramedicine, exhibit two, page three, C, the only way this is void is in writing, signed by the parties. And this contract doesn't say it needs a chief's approval. That's all I got.
Jordan Price, sorry, this is my last remark. With the chief's office putting in these, uh, members into this next class, obviously the money is there. He keeps claiming budgetary issues, but there's no budgetary issues. You've seen, I'm not saying there's no budgetary issues, but you've seen the money that's in the EMS fund. Michael Stolffus was offered to go to the Reed class, and he denied. They said that they sent their original guys from the Sinclair class to Reed. That is false. Jeremy Hodap is here today. He was actually also in the Sinclair class. He has seniority over at least one guy in the Reed program right now. And he also did not go to the Reed class. He's also in the school VMS program with Michael Stolffus. So there's still a guy with more seniority than somebody in the Reed program and the guys in this next class that are all, that is also not being compensated, along with Michael Stolffus. And if the, what doesn't make sense to me is that the chief's office has the money to budget for this set amount of members for this class starting next month. Why would they not be able to, instead of sending whatever members? Because he already said that he would rather send three at a time or such. Instead of sending a group, a large group again, why not compensate the two individuals in the school VMS using that money that would have been for them anyways? Thank you.
All right, with that, the union, uh, last comments are closed.
Pretty much the facts of agreements are, um, I had budgeted for six members that went last year. And like I said, Hodap was asked part of that thing. He opted out because of Family Matters, and we replaced him with another person. Those six members are still currently in the Reed class. They'll, they'll graduate here in August, sometime in August. And then we'll start the next class. So this comes down to me budgeting and planning and administrating rights. I said, I did not okay for, for, uh, for the EMS class in Winchester. I made it fairly clear that we would not support it because of where we were at at the time. It was made clear to the union president. The union president told me that he made it clear to those five members, which three of those members didn't go to the Winchester class. They're currently enrolled in the, in the July class we're going to start. This all comes down to the rights. Like I said, I didn't okay it, he volunteered for it, and this is where we're at. Thanks.
Just, just for clarification, who is the union president?
Um, currently, right now, it's Kyle Vickers. But at that time, Kyle Vickers was not capable of being the president at that time. And first vice president, Morris, was the acting president.
Thank you. With both statements made, the board's vote and answer on this grievance must be made within 21 administrative working days of today's final meeting. Does the board wish to schedule a date to discuss and deliberate this matter in a separate, open and public meeting prior to the due date, which falls on Thursday, July 24th, 2025?
I would support.
I would support that. So yeah, is that a motion?
Yeah, I'm so moved.
One second then.
What's, what's the motion?
To meet at a later date prior to the 24th.
Okay, in an open-
In an open meeting, yes. Okay, all right. I have a motion in a second to advise on a open meeting date prior to Thursday, 20, July 20, 24th. Uh, I'm sorry, July 24th, 2025, to give our final answer. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any other remarks from the board? If not, we are adjourned.
Mr.?
Oh, yes?
Mr. President, before you adjourned, uh, Kenneth had asked about receiving a packet of materials from Chief Kinder. And I wanted to see before adjourning if you wanted to reconvene the meeting so that you could take a look at that packet. And I didn't know if the other board members wanted to take a look at that packet. So it's just one thing I caught, because pretty much everything has been made part of the record. So I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Poust is, uh-
Well, really, I'd talked about, and I think this may be the policy thing that I had asked about. And this one, because it's tuition reimbursement. I think that probably covers all of it.
But you had asked about the, specifically about the training packet. And that was not part of any materials given to law or the board. So I just wanted to make sure that the board, if it wanted that particular training, new hire training packet, I wanted to make sure that the board had an opportunity to, to receive that. And that would mean just reconvening this meeting. So I just wanted to make sure you guys are on the same page about whether you want that particular new hire training packet.
That's the new, what's used for new members is when they come on board. And, uh, I was more concerned in, in the packet and the tuition part. If that's what this is, then I don't really need anything else on there at this time. And I think this was probably, this was policy 1,008, which is probably in that new packet. And I'm not sure how big that-
So you were focused more on the mechanics of it?
Right, right, on the mechanics. I wanted to know, so many times in orientations, you come in, you have brand-new members, you bring them in, you give them the packet. I don't know how many pages are in your packet, but there could be 50 or 100 pages in there. And the odds are, the new guy doesn't read all those pages.
Actually, we make them sign every page.
Oh, every page.
But that's one of the first three days on the department, that's, they won't do that.
And so you stand there and watch them read it, and then they sign the page. Uh, it's still questionable.
Are there a quiz, is there a quiz?
That they do read every page. Some, some people might read every page, but I'll bet some of them just sign it and go on through.
We advise them to do, make sure they, I mean, we advise them to-
Well, you should. And, and that's why you give them this, so you don't have this disagreement.
Well, it's more about, we make sure, because if we could address it from a fundamental part of some kind of, they've got trouble for not, something, we can go back, no, this is right here, you've signed it, we've addressed it. Those, those beginning stages of employment, that's, yeah.
So if you're, but I just want to make sure if you're comfortable with the record as it stands, then I just wanted to interject that, I apologize, Mr. President.
All right, you can interject anytime you like.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Any other comments? And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all.